Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the FSHP Town Hall Meeting. I am going to go ahead and turn it over to President Bill Turnus.
I'm very used to being called that. It just feels very awkward for me. But anyways, welcome you all. Thank you all for joining us tonight this evening. Uh, hopefully, everybody's getting prepared for the holidays and having a stressful, uh, a a, uh, not a stressful time of the year for them and enjoying their time. But, um, this is my first Town Hall since, uh, my presidency, since the beginning of the year, uh, my, uh, since the first, our meeting, our annual meeting. And so I just want to give a couple of updates and, uh, some of the things recently that we're going over and open up opportunity for any questions. So let's go ahead and get started with our agenda for tonight. And go to the next slide. So, uh, to start off with is, uh, we have, uh, we'll move through all these real quick. And, uh, let's go ahead and start off with, uh, our new teammate. That we have for FSHP. So Tamika, do you wanna, I'll let you introduce Maisha.
So everyone, um, heard at the annual meeting that we were working to expand our team here at FSHP. I don't like to say staff. I like to say team because that's what we are. And I feel like we work better when we feel like we're a part of something. So Kevin and I are so grateful that we now have a new team member. So I would like to, um, introduce everyone to Maisha Wap, who is the Executive Administrative Assistant for FSHP. Maisha.
Hi, everyone. I just want to say that I'm really excited to be here and to be a part of the family. Um, and you know, it's gonna be a great career moving forward. And reach out to me if you ever need anything. I'm always here to help.
Thank you so much, Maisha.
No, I don't think there's a time where, uh, you will not see Maisha smiling or making somebody laugh. And I know, um, I think it, it, it brings into our dynamic for our team. And so, you know, so much of what we do and what we represent of our, our, our members is that customer service and making them feel a part of, and I think Maisha, that you, you're gonna be doing a great, great job of that. So welcome. We're really excited to have you.
Eight thirty AM every morning on the dot, she says.
Sometimes earlier.
A, a very big good morning, every morning at eight thirty. Alrighty, so Bill, you ready to?
Yep, let's move on. So, uh, getting ready, we're moving into our, our legislative session and we're getting, uh, prepared for, um, uh, again, some initiatives. Uh, Andrea, allow for our chair. Um, unfortunately, you won't be able to present this tonight because she's at a a Central Florida Society, uh, re- uh, Christmas dinner. So hopefully, that group there in Central Florida is behaving themselves. But fortunately Kathy, uh, she graciously stepped up and she can provide us some updates on some more legal regulatory affairs that are coming down the pipeline, some of which is very, I mean, all of it is very important. But I think we have very important initiatives that we're working on for ourselves. But there are certain things that I think are coming out that may impact our community pharmacy partners that we kind of have to have our ear to the ground for. So not to steal too much, but Kathy, I appreciate you. Thank you so much for, for, uh, giving this update to us.
And thank you, President Turnus. Um, I, Santa came early this year and bought me a new computer, but the Zoom camera is not working, so I'm not quite sure about that. Mika, can we come back to this slide? I'd like to go to the next slide if we can. So legislative days are right around the corner. It's an even year. And even years, they are January and February in Tallahassee. Odd years, they're March and April. And the reason is twenty twenty-four is an election year. So the legislators want to do their jobs, get back home and start campaigning. So we will be there the first day of session, January the ninth, and we will have appointments on January the tenth. Uh, we will be have, everyone will have all the same talking points and there'll be a small group of us going. So if you're going to be up there, we'd love to hear from you and connect with you up there. Please let Tamika know and she will let us know. Thank you. So let's talk a little bit about the legislation. So, um, we are following House Bill two zero one and its companion bill. Pharmacist to authorize a thirty-day emergency refill of insulin and supplies in the state of Ohio. When they were getting collaborative practice agreements, a family came forward and talked about how their loved one had gone to the pharmacy on the weekend trying to get insulin. And the pharmacist called the physician's office multiple times to no avail. That patient went home and died. So if we hear of stories where patients have been harmed like that, we need to let our legislators know. We can certainly share that story. But, um, we'll be following this bill. Another bill, and I refer to it as SB Senate Bill oh four four four, so Senate Bill four four four. This is a bill, um, at the request of Walgreens and it's nine pages. And it talks about pharmacy techs to dispense in Walgreens pharmacies and then, of course, other pharmacies with no pharmacist on site and then with remote supervision by the pharmacist working at home. So when we met through Gray Robinson with their lobbyist, um, we asked him, why aren't you using the automated dispensing cabinets? And he said it wasn't in the math. So this is, uh, just a different attempt to uh, as was told to us, reduce the workload of the pharmacist. It can also be used in hospital and we will oppose this. Andrea put in here, House Bill oh four nine one, every year there is, um, a bill by Senator Harrell to prevent health plans from adding step therapy. In this case, it's for mental health needs. Step therapy means you have to fail formulary items in a stepwise manner before you can get the medication approved that may be needed as a first-line agent. Yeah, thank you, John. I love that. Oh, did I do that, Tamika? Okay. So let's go back to, um, PEP and PrEP. HB oh one five nine, Gallup Franklin, our pharmacist from Tallahassee has introduced the PEP and PrEP bill. It is pending a sponsor. Now, the bill that we have been championing, we've been working with the FMA. We've been working with, uh, we spoke with the House leadership, the Senate leadership. Our Gray Robinson lobbyists are talking to the insurance companies and swinging back around to the FMA is a bill that allows reimbursement for consultant pharmacists who work in health system physician-led team-based care clinics. So it would take what we are doing on the inpatient side and put a pharmacist to do it in a heart failure clinic, in a transitions of care clinic and would allow billing at eighty percent of what a physician would do by using higher billing codes. So special thanks to Cleveland Clinic, Tampa General, UF Jacks, Baptist Miami and Moffitt for their support from their CMOs and their health systems. On Friday, we will meet again with our lobbyists. We had hoped to get this bill into a very large package because the Senate, uh, President Kathleen Passadoma, her major priority is healthcare. And we know and we have great talking points on this, which we can put on the webpage, that pharmacists can save money on thirty-day readmissions. We can manage medications better than physicians. We can reduce their medication administrative tasks, which they love us for on the inpatient side. And this bill would allow us to get our foot in the door and prove ourselves to the physicians. So we'll have more about that coming up. Uh, they've been working very hard on that. And then, Meek, I think the final slider, is there two more left? I want to go back to the
I wasn't able to.
That one, okay.
Okay, cool.
This is really important. We are going to have a PAC advocacy event. We are combining with Florida Pharmacy Association. And we are going to support both Gallup Franklin and Shane Abbott. And the most that we can give to each person, so this is money is not going to the PAC. This money is going directly into their PAC. Um, so not from our PAC, from us as individuals. And they will, um, have a brief introduction on January the eighth. This is the last day that we can give money to the legislators. We have already given money from FSHP. But the two of them have proven to be so valuable to us. When it comes to some of these bills, we know what is gonna pass. We know what's not going to pass. I have no fear about SB four forty-four because we have these people in legislature, but they really do need our financial support. So we will be sending out that link and you may RSVP to it. And we will have them on for a few minutes because they are running around collecting checks from everybody since it's the last day legally that they can. And with that, I think I'm finished, Mika. Um, Bill, do you want to take questions now or at the end?
Let's go ahead and take questions now.
Okay.
John had a comment in the chat. John, did you want to speak on that or did you want me to read it?
You can read it. It's just a comment relative to that insulin. I think in, in the need to, uh, protect patients, I, I think a, any patient who needs insulin, who was inconvenienced by a weekend and unable to contact the physician, I would still dispense it. And I would authorize anyone, one of my pharmacists to dispense it, uh, as, you know, in, in our system. So anyway, just a food for thought. Don't be stopped by the law when it doesn't make sense.
I have a confession to make. About thirty years ago, I dispensed nitroglycerin without a prescription because I had a patient who had a history of nitroglycerin and they ran out of refills and I couldn't reach the doctor. And I literally shoved one under their tongue. However, that was before the PDE test races or whatever there were on the market. Okay, true confession time. All right, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, I, again, I liked this slide again. The, the, these were just the bills that we're monitoring closely. And obviously, the, there are, all of them are very important and we want to keep touch, our, our, our pulse to the ground. I'm very intrigued with, uh, the Walgreens Senate Bill four 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 and see how that goes. Cause you know, one of the things that I, I envisioned with, you hear more about, uh, the pharmacist, um, and community work workload and the working conditions that, um, and then, and the, and the walkout, the national walkouts, I couldn't ima- I mean, I imagine that we would hear from these chains to um, look for methods to, to do such, such a bill. So, uh, very interesting. All right.
Nisha has the comment. Nisha, can you speak?
Yes, I can. Um, I wanted to update everyone and, uh, actually congratulate John Armstead on being able to present tomorrow with the FHA on the naloxone initiative in, um, postpartum movement focused on the ED in preventing that mortality. And in speaking as part of the Medication Safety Forum with FHA, they definitely want pharmacy to be part of the team as the state is looking at decreasing readmissions and looking at transitions of care and how pharmacists can be part of the team in identifying gaps and establishing that team-based care. So they think in conjunction with that bill for the eighty percent of physician reimbursement by seeing pharmacists as part of the table in these conversations will further strengthen that, um, bill and that awareness of what the pharmacist brings to the table.
Thank you, Nisha. You know, our very first, uh, job was to meet with the FHA about this bill. And they were supportive of it. We were hoping they would pick it up and help us get it into the large package of healthcare that Senator Passadoma is bringing forward. Um, that did not occur. That's okay. We're still seeking bill sponsors, but the bill is in drafting, so we made all the deadlines. Um, so this is Plan B and that's okay too. So we'll see what happens. But thank you for that. We want to collaborate with them. Uh, and we do. But, and, and then we'll talk more offline about that.
Appreciate you. Great. Thanks for the feedback and comments, Nisha.
You're welcome. I just wanted to put it out there in case others are thinking of projects and, you know, pharmacist scope of practice on some of the opportunities we have to educate the teams and to keep this in mind. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yep, absolutely. All right, let's, let's go ahead and move on to the next slide, uh, Tamika. All right, so the next few slides is some of my follow-up uh, from the ASHP mid-year meeting. So hopefully, uh, if you had a chance to attend this year's, uh, twenty twenty-three ASHP mid-year in Anaheim, and if you haven't, it was a great meeting, um, and for me, I had the opportunity to, to attend a variety of different conferences and presentations, uh, pertains to state affiliates. I'll be able to meet a lot of new individuals across the other states and the state affiliate affiliations. At one conference that we went to, um, a part of the conference, we went to a lot of focus and ASHP has put a lot of focus on, um, the pharmacy advancement initiative of twenty thirty. And I know we, we started that, started that out, and I think a lot of health systems have begun or have already completed the self-assessment tool. But the state of Florida as a whole, uh, we have a, uh, a below twenty-four percent of our hospitals have responded to the survey. Um, and so I want to have an initiative and to pick this back up for this coming up year, getting this out to our health system leaders to take the assessment. Because this assessment, obviously, one, not only helps with that individual health system to give them ideas for the future, but also helps with ASHP and their pharmacy forecasting of, of projects and where pharmacy is going. So, uh, I put the link in here, uh, but I know we'll probably be able to send this out and many already have had it or have had taken it. But I still want to put that out there and again, encourage everybody here on the phone, on the call. If they hadn't completed the survey, please go in and complete the survey. But more to come on us as a state affiliate to help improve, uh, our survey. And then based off the survey responses, being able to bring that back to our members and how we as an organization can help the hea- our health systems facilitate and help achieve some of these recommendations. All right, let's go to the next slide. So one of the things at mid-year, we are very fortunate. I was, uh, uh, surprised, uh, and, uh, very proud of our society for a variety of reasons. But on the national stage, one of our FSHP members, Dr. Julie Grope, uh, from the VA won the ASHP twenty twenty-three Pharmacy Champion Award. Um, and this was a, was given out of one of a handful of awards that was given out that day. I think one of two of this particular type of award and is a recognition by ASHP of commitment to the growth of our profession uh, as a whole. So I'm not sure if Julie's on, but, uh, if you get opportunity, please congratulate her for her such achievement and, uh, being an advocate for our profession. Go to the next slide. So one of the things I attended this, and I noticed that John's on too. So I learned a lot of John from that, that night there at the president's dinner. So we're at the president reception dinner at ASHP and these are all the state presidents from the, uh, the current state presence across the country. Um, and I, I was able to bring our own, uh, board director, Sarah Pinella, with us, uh, with me to this, uh, reception dinner. And obviously, you can see John was there as well. Uh, John was recognized as being a past president and John had the loudest ovation of all presidents. I'm not sure if John would agree, but he had the, 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 the largest ovation. So we're very proud of John and, and all those achievements as well. So move on. Another recognition is, um, on the left, uh, our tre- our FSHP treasurer gave a management pearl at, on the national stage of, uh, and gave that presentation. I wanted to recognize him, so had a full house there at that, in this particular session. And again, going back to me having the opportunity to network with, uh, quite a few individuals. The individual I have there on the right, his name is Dr. Christopher Crank. He is the Executive Vice President of the Illinois Council Chapter of Health System Pharmacists. Um, very, I'm very fortunate to have networked with him because we kind of discussed some of, uh, many of our, many you may have know or know or we're working on here as a FSHP to continue to grow our association on our, in our, our team. Uh, we have Maisha joined and now our next stage is we're looking for our own Executive Vice Presidents, uh, to help uh, with a pharmacist to represent us in front of things such as the border pharmacy and other commit, uh, other cop meetings. But Chris was able to provide a lot of insights, great tool. I have a feeling we rely on him as we start doing our own search for our own Executive Vice President. So, uh, again, another great contact that I met when I was out there. And this is just a few slides with, with Anaheim, me and past presidents, Bill Kurnan. So, um, a lot of, uh, members from FSHP who had the opportunity to, to network and meet out there. All right, next slide. So wanted to something that was released at mid-year that we kind of, we had a resolution, uh, recommendation last year at our House of Delegates regarding the national, I mean, of public awareness of pharmacist. And it was, um, personally announced during the same time last year that ASHP is, is, um, has a national campaign of raising awareness of health system pharmacists. They committed, uh, three million dollars to that to start off with and is continuing to grow and seek that, uh, national awareness campaign at national level. But I plan on after this call today is publicis- publicizing this. I'll show, I'll show you a video of what they, they rolled out. But one is something that we can highlight for all of our members to share on social media and pass it out and really get it out there, especially as we move into our legislative session. So what I want to roll, show you here, if you go to the next slide.
Are you ready for the video?
Go ahead. And this is the video, this is the first time they, they showed the video at, at mid-year. Uh, they showed this video at mid-year and it, I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to see it yet, but I'm going to show you. It's two minutes long. But this is the first one of many. So go ahead.
Hi, Sarah. Mind if I turn on the light? I hear you're having a rough time with your chemo. I just don't really feel like myself. This is a really tough side effect, I know, but I promise it's temporary. There are a few resources I can tell you about too. Mr. Martin? Joan?
Hi, Doctor.
How's he feeling?
Tired.
He's been through a lot. Did you talk to Dr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, so do you have any questions about what comes next? We'll work together to make sure he's as comfortable as possible.
Thank you.
We'll get through this.
We had a chance to look at the results from the genetic test.
I've seen them and had recommendations, but I want to get the patient on a close monitoring schedule. Can we go over this now?
Yes.
Okay, cool. We're all set.
Okay, thank you. So what on the next?
Next week, you'll be seeing my colleague in the infusion clinic. I'll touch base with him. He's one of the best pharmacists we have over there. Leo, look at you.
We did it, Dr. Schleifer. We beat it.
We're in every hospital and health system and we impact everyone there. We're the pharmacists. It's time people saw us.
So this video is the first video. They, I'm not sure how many more they have, but they're looking to get phone call. They're looking for us to tell a story. So this is one story and every one of us probably can tell our own story that of how we've impacted a, a patient's life. And on an outpost, when I put on my social media, I'll post on the website too, there's links where we can submit our own story. And, and it, ASHP is currently looking for these different stories to help advocate for us. And so I thought this was a, uh, a great start. It was, uh, recognized with a standing ovation there at mid-year. And I think it's a great start. So I wanted to pass that along to everybody, if not, everybody's had an opportunity to see that. All right, moving on, um, so what I wanted to kind of give, uh, since this is our first Town Hall since our annual meeting, I, I feel that our annual meeting had one of the, uh, was a I personally felt one of our best meetings we've ever had. And it was a, a, a lot of work went into it. We had a great keynote, great content, great speakers, uh, great, uh, venue. It, it's, it was a fantastic man. So I really do like to recognize Tamika and Kevin and everybody who was involved with a lot of the behind-the-scenes stuff. But all the cap- component chairs, all the councils, all the vol- our volunteer servant leaders that helped get this meeting. Cause one of the things that I recognize, even when I was at mid-year at the national media meeting and I saw other vendors and I saw other people, everybody made comments saying that they felt that Florida's state affiliate and state meetings was one of the strongest, best programs that there is. And so, uh, I wanted to kind of carry that back on to you all too, is, you know, one thing I did recognize that I, I'm, we're very proud. We have a very strong, solid, well-oiled, uh, state society, state association. But our annual meeting is one of the best. And I, I highlighted that and advocated that when I went to the vendor halls and other people that come to our annual meeting solicited people to come out. So these are some of the highlights this year from our annual meeting. So the registrations, we have seventy-five pharmacists, twelve percent were students, nine, about ten percent technicians and three were residents. If you look compared our revenue compared over the last year, we had twenty percent increase in our revenue. Most of our revenue comes from our exhibitors. We get obviously a big chunk from our registration. But one of the things that you'll continue, you'll see is we, we push and we, there's a lot of thought and strategy has gone into uh, our partner, vendor partners to help support our annual meeting. Because again, the meeting is such a great meeting with full, rich content. But a lot of the revenue comes from our vendors. That's why it's important that we, we have such a, an exhibit hall and, and participates. With this year, we had the, I, I believe the highest number of exhibitors to date uh, at our annual meeting. We had over a hundred and five exhibit booths, fifty, uh, members for, fifty vendors for our reverse expo. And we had twelve vendors represent, recognized as a sponsor level. The number of CEOs that we offered, we had a total of fifty-two different types of CEOs from eighteen pharmacists, twelve consultant and nineteen for technicians. So, um, again, and also to highlight our keynote this year for our keynote, hopefully you all enjoyed our keynote. I remember at our board meeting, we had a lot of discussion about this particular individual and route because typically in the past, our keynote has been, um, you know, a lot of pharmacy focus, um, and discussion of updates. But this year we wanted to, um, do something a little different and it was more inspirational type of, uh, as pertains to healthcare. And so I think it was well, very well received and hard to, to, uh, the, the top for this year, but, um, I'm very confident in our team. That's our annual meeting, all right? One of the things to note for our annual meeting this year, please put it on our calendar. It, it's gonna be, and we, we have high hopes for this meeting as well. The date is going to be different compared to, since I've ever been to FSHP. Um, the day is going to be the last weekend in July. Um, and not to get too nitty, cause I don't know all the specifics, but I will tell you there's reasons why as a good partner with Rosen and our hotels. You know, several years ago when COVID hit, we were supposed to go to, uh, this particular hotel with Rosen. And, uh, with COVID happening, like many other societies and organizations, we had to cancel our meeting. We had an agreement and we had an agreement and a contract with this particular vent, with this particular hotel. And they're gracious enough back then to, what's the word, um? Back out of the agreement to cancel the agreement and they canceled that no cost for us. And that is something that they did not have to do. So in order to be a steward, to be a good partner uh, with Rosen. Because they have many other hot hotels, we wanna show our good faith and go back to this hotel that we're supposed to go to several years ago. And in order for us to fit in, this is the date, the July twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth. So please put it on your calendars. I know it's a little different, but also get the word out to everybody. Anything else to make on that one?
Nope, that's probably the most important thing is looking at the dates. Everybody usually marks that first weekend of August. But we'll be doing a lot of advertising and a lot of um, distributions, just to make sure that everyone is aware of the different timeframe for twenty twenty-four. Okay.
Yep.
And.
That will lead up to open discussion and questions.
Yep. Got one in the chat, um, Mike Shu says, Mr. Rosen also came to our board meeting. It was very gracious in thanking us for. Using his hotel. That is correct. Thank you, Mike.
You know, one of the things with that, our annual meeting, the um. With growth is always good. And you know, this was a couple of years ago. And one of the things that uh. Tamika's been tasked with is how do we, and and not just Tamika, this is our whole team, is how do we. That new bar, I felt a new bar has been set for our annual meetings based off last year. And I'm sure every year we try to strive to to surpass the previous year. And I think space and growth of both vendors and our organization, uh, um, is gonna be tight in there. But we're very excited for that though. Not, we're excited about growth.
And before everyone logs out, we'd like to take a group picture. I know that a lot of people probably aren't able to come on camera. But if we can get a few people to come on, and that's if we don't have any additional questions, but um. If you're able to come on camera and I'm gonna stop sharing my screen at the end and Kevin's gonna just take a a nice. Group shot for us to be able to post on social media. Um, thank you. Uh, so Nisha says, can we have the awards printed, presented during the annual meeting like ASHP? I think that might be something we'd have to take offline into the board before addressing that. And Mike, our meeting is the very best. Thanks to all. Thank you, Mike, for always being so great.
Nisha, I'll take yours. I'll re, I'll work, I'll bring it up with the board and ask about the words, cuz I know there's a process. Uh, I know. Strategically timing when this gets done and fitting into our schedule.
Yeah.
So, but we noted your, I noted your feedback.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I I just know that uh, in this culture of social media and, you know, ASHP also doing that. Many people don't know who are our winners are and it it's presented during the meeting. But it would be very nice to present it to them during the meeting among their peers. Um, so I wanted to to share that. Thank you for considering it.
Absolutely. I thought of something else. I I I forgot, I should, I wanted to add to agenda, but I'll bring it up now, is I sent an email to a lot of the leaders. Uh, and I think the email was spread, sent out by FS, by Tamika and Kevin regarding it's trying to identify our mentor mentee program for FSHP. Um, and so I sent a e- a personal email to, uh, an email to all of our current. Uh, regional leaders, our past presidents, to please take this opportunity to engage our students. Another comment that, or another theme that we saw at mid-year was. What is the pharmacy workforce gonna look like in the near future as evolving? Many people believe, including myself, I think that in over the next few years, you're gonna see, there's gonna be a a upcoming pharmacist shortage. We, I don't think we're in one right now, but I I think we will over the next few years. The enrollment of pharmacy students in the pharmacy schools have been declining over the past decade. Now, I, and one of the things I presented on a few months ago, that this past year's enrollment is probably the lowest, has been about twenty years. Um, since the early two, the early two thousands. And so I think with the projections of what we're seeing of walkouts and and decreased enrollments. Um, the number of pharmacy students have have gradually declined. Now with the gradual decline of pharmacy students. One of the things we are seeing within our own organization is a theme across all organizations. Is a decline in the number of student members uh, in their, in the state societies. Um, and one of the things that I'm working with our, our student director Gina Stevenson and. And as well as Dianos is working with us to, we're gonna try to create a, an initiative to how to engage more students into our state association. And I encourage you all to is to figure out, provide ideas. To the board of how can we engage more students and join in our profession, our organization. So.
So President Turner, if I can piggyback on that, um, we have reached out to all the schools of pharmacy. And done an advocacy onboarding lecture, which we do every fall. And then depending on spring session or or January, uh, we like to keep the students updated on the, on the legislative session and how the bills are moving. So if there's any students on this call or any students who are interested in joining L and R, we will embrace you. Just let Tamika know. We want as many students in our succession planning for advocacy as humanly possible. So thank you and thank you to Gregory, who's been helping us identify people. I was about to say, I'm gonna acknowledge Gina and Greg and Domingo, who are also on the call today. Our student leaders that are getting out ahead and doing a great job. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Domingo, Domingo, I saw you on here, and Gina, and I got Gregory.
One of the things that that Gina doesn't know yet, but I'm gonna try to kind of connect students and the P A I. So I think the students need to know what P A I is, because obviously that's their. Profession in the next five, ten, fifteen years. And so they need to be involved right now for that. So I wanna have them to see how they can help us complete some surveys for, with our health systems. Any other questions or discussions?
Uh, hi, everyone. I'm Domingo. I'm a student chapter president over at Lee Com in Bradenton, a little south of Tampa. Um, I I do think that video that you showed earlier is a, is a great step, especially for the profession of pharmacy. Um, seeing a lot of the P ones that are coming in, a lot of them do have kind of like. Low spirits, they're just kind of going through lectures, going through it, trying to adjust to that new work-life balance of of going to school and doing everything that they. Were previously doing. Um, I do think that video is a great narrative to try to change. What's currently out there with all the walkouts that are going on. Um, if it's possible to maybe do something very similar with pharmacy schools. Um, I think that would help kind of turn the tide a little bit to to try to get us to. Turn that that page and and kind of push pharmacy school again to try to get enrollment up. But I know it is something that's going on uh, across the nation, so it is kind of hard, especially when you have those walkouts that are currently going on. But we maybe trying to change the narrative of like, hey, that's, that's retail, that's its own beast, like. We're all healthcare pharmacists and this is what we're doing day to day. And this is how we're slightly different, but not trying to point the finger too much. Um, I think that would, that would kind of help, cuz you know, unfortunately, that is, that is a very hard. Um, I was, I was a former Marine and it's like anytime there was a Marine that did, went out and did something, like two weeks ago, there was a few Marines that were out drinking out in California and they got into a scuffle. So instead of the narrative being, oh, two guys got into a fight, it it turned into, oh, a Marine was the one doing this. And and then so like the whole Marine Corps is the one that now has to like deal with this, not just those two individuals. And that's the same thing that could be said about pharmacists. Once a pharmacist does something, it could be somewhere completely remote, North Dakota or something like that in rural area. But yet, the moment that they find out it's pharmacist, that's what media is gonna say, hey, this pharmacist did this. And then they think, okay, that pharmacist that's in retail is the same pharmacist that's. In a, in a healthcare setting, in a hospital or in an industry. And and I think that video would help, uh, if we're able to kind of also capture. And 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 uh, relate it back to pharmacy school as well. So I do, I do hope Gina informed me that you guys are gonna be doing a tour and I think that's great that you guys are gonna be going to each campus.
Yep. We, you know pharmacies, we're all connected. And I think every one of us knows how small pharmacy is and how we, how we're all connected to each other. With between, that's why we're, we, we have a collaboration with the RFPA counterparts. Um, and for us and uh, obviously, but for our health systems, I I I saw the video. And the, it's not just a single video, but I think I'm I'm calling on you all to submit your own stories to ASHP. And I like to have, I mean, ideally, somebody representing the state of Florida, be able to present their own um, story on a national level. So I wanna share that via social media posts and Kevin, maybe you can help me out, put something nice together as a post. Cuz people who follow me on follow, on Twitter, there's not too many of those that want to follow me and uh. And I'm not very creative, so. Um, I like for, if you're able to help me put that out and I start sharing it. And hopefully everybody starts seeing as well and they can start sharing it and getting not only our our communities, but our leaders, our executives. And our legislators to be able to be seeing this as well.